I always call to see if anybody would like to talk to these items in the public hearing, but I think those that are here are likely speaking on the agenda item. We'll just make a note that there's no one else in attendance who wants to speak or is here to speak for the public hearing. We'll effectively close the public hearing at 5:06 PM, move back into our agenda, regular agenda. Agenda item number six, this is the, to consider the zoning map amendment for the wildflower subdivision parcels four oh four five three two four seven from R one eight residential estate to R two small lot residential and parcel four oh four five three two four eight from R one eight single family residential to R two small lot residential. Um, before, before we get into this, and I should have brought this up at the beginning of the meeting. I want to declare that I do have a conflict of interest on this agenda item. Um, so I will be careful with my comments. But I would like it noted if you will please.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Vance, will you please present the item to the commissioners?
Hey, in your packet, you've got the application and their, the reasons for their zoning request change. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, this was rezoned to R one eight and we went through the preliminary plat process. And apparently the owners and developers felt like that that wasn't going to pencil out for them and so they've come back with the request to rezone it to an R two, which will allow for a smaller single family lots and some town home type developments there. And we do have, I believe, Thomas and I think Isaiah are both here representing this project.
Would it be appropriate if we asked vice chair to chair this agenda item or are we comfortable with me standing in his chair with a conflict of interest? It's up to you. Commissioners, do you have any objection if I?
I don't have an objection.
Host the conversation with the.
What's the conflict?
I, I act, I am actually a party to this design and consulting service in connection with Thomas. So I have a potential financial interest through my consult, through my consulting services.
Right. Okay. I'm fine if you continue.
And I don't have any problem with any of the commissioners chairing this agenda item either. I just wanna check with the commissioners.
I don't have an issue with it.
I don't.
Go ahead. Good.
All right. Thomas, would you like to present this item to the commissioners?
Let me move this a little bit.
Yeah.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Thomas Timson and I am representing the developer on this project. Isaiah Barlow is also here if you have any questions specifically for him, but uh, so thank you Vance for introducing this item. This project was originally, uh, it's already been rezoned and the plans for a subdivision have already been developed and approved through the city for quarter acre lots. But in the process of pricing everything out and, and trying to develop a plan for going and actually building houses on the development, then the developer is realizing that the product that would be produced with like a typical two thousand square foot house on a quarter acre lot, uh, that would, it doesn't really hit the market for, in terms of the pricing range that a typical person from around here is going to afford. Especially when you consider the prevailing interest rates of six and seven percent. So, uh, their goal with this project is to develop a smaller unit development where the lots would be smaller to help bring the cost of the development down and then also the individual houses would be smaller to make them more affordable, uh, and more attainable for a typical small family in this area. And so we're seeking to rezone from the current zoning, which is R one eight to an R two zoning, which is, uh, but I mean, we've had discussions about this in the past. It's a, it's a transitional zone that allows for small lot, small lot, single family residential that are detached or, uh, combined with, uh, uh, more of like a townhouse development where the residential units are attached. And the development concept that we've come up with is a combination of both of those together. And you can, I think you have that in your packet, but what we're proposing is a combination of single family detached, uh, with the townhouses. So we're right now, we have eighteen single family detached with I think like twenty-seven townhouse units. And, and so in considering the location of this property, we feel like it's a good candidate for this type of zoning. It's, it's on the outskirts of town, outskirts of the developed area of the town. Uh, it's across the street from the new community center that's being constructed or remodeled over there by the U E P. Uh, and then the, there's vacant land basically to the south and to the east with the exception of a commercial building. And then to the north, then you have one house there to the north across the street, but then there's the two single family residential properties that are adjacent. So, but generally speaking, we feel like this is a good fit for this type of zoning. Uh, it's a block away from the Cottonwood Elementary, so it, it, it's conducive to, to small families with young children and it's also within walking distance of Cottonwood Park. So we feel like having the higher density next to the con, or next to the park is, is a plus. So that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions you guys have.
Commissioners, questions?
Are your street layouts tip basically the same as the, your previous one? Or are they completely different?
We added one, the one that goes east west was originally planned, not in that exact location, but generally, but we added the one going north and south.
Is those lots originally entered from Memorial Street?
They entered from Academy. They entered from Academy and then our new street. The new street originally, uh, went right along the south boundary of those two lots to the north and it continued right through there. So you would access lots from that street and then also Academy.
But your old one, you just had access to those where the townhomes are on that new, where that new road is off of Memorial, right? Cause you didn't have that other street in there?
There was originally only, I think, six lots there and three of them access to the, to be developed road and three of them access to Academy, nothing access to Memorial on either plan.
Memorial would have been on the side of those lots.
Okay. And then what about your streets? Are they the same width?
We're proposing to reduce the width. The original street, I believe it was a sixty-six foot right of way, uh, which is a standard street section. With this, we're proposing to shrink that down to forty-five feet, which allows for thirty feet of asphalt and a five foot sidewalk on each side with curb gutter. So.
And then the townhomes would be individually deeded?
Yep. Yeah, that's the idea. So these, and so we would be requesting a variance for this particular street section, uh, but it's pretty typical for a local street to have that kind of a street section. And it's actually the same street section we used up at the reservoir. So the city has previously approved it.
Yeah.
On the single family homes. So the, the north row comes in off the access road, the south row is coming off of university?
Yes.
And those aren't custom built? You're building all those at the same time? The single family homes?
Yeah, the developer would come in and, and build those single family homes. And they would range, the ideas that they'd range between like twelve hundred square feet and eighteen hundred square feet. So they're on the smaller side.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Anything else from?
I feel like the zoning changes conducive to what we want to see in that part, so it makes sense to me.
Yeah, I, I actually think it's a great, uh, plan for the area. Um, like you said, it's close to the park, it's close to schools, it's close to, well, it's not close to a grocery store, cause that's so far away, but.
Yeah.
But everything else.
I wonder how Sound's gonna travel on that, when they get the civic center done finally, but we'll find that out.
Yeah.
Looking forward to the civic center getting done too.
It's a big project.
And you will not, he will not need to come back and to deed these individually once they're constructed?
So the applicant will, will absolutely have to come back. Um, the application today is, is only for rezone. If approved by the town council, the applicant would have to come back with a preliminary plat.
Okay.
That's at that point that we would formally request the variance for the streets and.
Right.
Inside that.
Okay.
I don't want to cut short any more questions or concerns or comments from the commissioners?
I don't have any.
I think that's all I had.
All right, if there's no other comments, entertain a motion on the item.
I will move to recommend to the city for a zone map amendment for wildflower subdivision parcels four oh four five three two four seven from R one eight to R one two small residential and four oh four five three two four eight from R one eight to single family residential to R two small lot residential.
Motion by Commissioner Bradshaw?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Steed. Uh, if you don't mind, we'll take a roll call vote just for matter of record.
Charles Bradshaw?
Yes.
Lee Highsteed?
Yes.
Harold Pavolonis?
Yes.
Aaron LaCordi?
Yes.
Charles Hammond?
I'll abstain considering conflict of interest. All right, commissioners, it appears that four votes will, motion of recommendation will go on to the town council and their meeting is, is their meeting next week?
Yes.
All right.
Next Monday.
All right. The next item is number eight, consider a text amendment to accommodate, accommodate modifying existing large single family residential structures into multi-family use. And maybe you can introduce that as well too, please?
As you recall, we, we had some preliminary discussion on this a couple of months ago, got some ideas. We have since worked up some language beginning in your packet. First, we, you have the table, sorry, they were out of order, this were backwards in the packet, so you go back before the other one. On the table, there's actually two amendments on the table. One is a cleanup that should have been done when we adopted the zoning code on the manufactured homes. And then on the multi-family dwelling, we would change it to a conditional use. And then the language of that condition, we will be adding a section one fifty-two oh forty-five C C that spells out the conditions. And I sent these out a few days ago. Some of the things we're looking at and, and items of discussion are on, and then it looks like I need to do some number cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
A, the building was used as a residential unit prior to the adoption of the zoning code. So that was one of the questions we had was if a framed up shell would qualify or if it actually needed to be used and occupied as a residential unit at the time the zoning code was adopted.
Would you mind saying that one more time? I understand the, the framing and put in use, right? But.
Well, we have some homes, say the one just east of the Cottonwood Village, that's just an empty shell. It was never finished, it was never lived in, it was never used as a residential unit.
Uh-huh.
There's, there's a few like that that are around that could potentially.
Right.
Be converted to this. The question is, do we want to hold it to the fact that they had to have already been, had somebody living in it as a residential unit or just an empty shell?
I definitely want to chalk that one up for discussion. Uh, but I don't want to cut you off from presenting the rest.
It would be only considered for the, uh, parcels in the short, original Short Creek subdivision, sheets five through twenty-eight. These are the exact same sheets that was on the flag lot, uh, parcels. And not in any other parcels of, or development. And it would also, uh, in any new developments within those sheets, if somebody does a new subdivision, then they wouldn't be able to just throw a multi-family in the middle of a residence, single family residential. And then the proposed use down in part B shall be residential units. And then the overall size of the finished building, that's another question. Uh, shall not increase the residential area for the total building by more than something. We want to, you know, a lot of these are going to have to have a little bit of flexibility to make dining nooks or other things.
Make them useful.
Meaningful without just allowing them to double the size of the building.
Where did the ten percent come from? Just.
It's just a number that seemed like a good starting point.
Good.
Yeah. I did feel like we needed to allow the A D U as it is permitted on the underlying zoning. And I think to try to remove that would probably be unwise. A site plan would have to be completed and approved prior tuitions of a building or remodel permit. That's pretty standard for any multi-family development. It will have to meet the applicable building and fire codes for the size and number of units created. And we, the town may require curb gutter drainage controls, so on, and then address signage compatible with the town's addressing regulations. So that's what I, we came up with the staff.
All right, I'd have opened this up for questions. I defer, I think, Andy, would you be willing to speak to this for the commissioners? I, I think this affects the building department considerably. Is there some background or context that you feel is important for the commissioners to discuss?
We.
Okay.
Yeah, we have had, and what's, what spurred this discussion was, we, we know we've got some that are doing it, you might say surreptitiously.
Yeah.
We had a couple come in and requested a rezone to an R two, so they could then remodel to apartments. So they were trying to come through the front door and do it right. The, the commission and the council have both been very reluctant to just drop an R two willy nilly out in a single family residential. And if you rezone it to an R two, then by right, they could then add as many more units to get up to their twelve per acre.
Yeah, runs with the land forever.
And that's what spurred this discussion of how to do that and still maintain that single family zoning.
Commission specifically asked for this, so it's exciting to see it on the agenda today.
I have a question on, uh, building was used as a residential, so.
Mm-hmm.
That house that you're talking about across the street from, uh.
Cottonwood Village.
Cottonwood Village. Let's say he's not able to do that, right? Because he hasn't lived in it, it's just a shell. But it's still a giant house, right? So what's going to prevent him from building the house and then renting it out as B and B or whatever? Still going to have this, a fair amount of people in it. What regulations do we have, you know, as far as that goes? We probably have more regulate, we probably could regulate it better if we could say, yeah, you could do this.
Uh, on the Airbnb side of it, it's, that's kind of a moot issue, cause in Arizona, we have very limited ability to regulate it, whether they're apartments or a large house.
What about parking and all that?
Parking, that's where the site plan comes in.
But no, I'm saying with an Airbnb though.
Well.
We don't really have the opportunity to.
Right.
To regulate much when it comes to Airbnbs.
And this is a question that the, the planning commission and council are going to have to weigh in on quite heavily is, you got this shell here. Out here, you've got a modular unit sitting on a basement that's never been finished, never lived in, and yet there, there could easily be made enough to apartment. Uh, do you want to open it that far and is so where you draw the line? Is a basement poured adequate? Does it have to be framed up and closed in and then make constitutes closed in?
I want to.
Next to the highway, I mean, I don't know what they're planning to do with that, but.
I, here's a, the first thing that came to my mind when I read this, and I think it's important to clarify the word use, use or used. And I, and you know, we think of the word use, we think of land use, but, but in order to put something into use, like it could mean different things, right? Based on how I read this. Use meaning land use or meaning it was put into use. And it seems like, one, land use means it's zoned a certain way, which is, it isn't, that isn't the case. That's why we're trying to address this. But the other putting into use is that the building received a certificate of occupancy, which is likely not going to be the case either.
Well, we, we could, uh, on that, you could say was used as a residential unit, uh, as proven by utility services or something.
Okay, that, that would be, I think, more effective. Cause in my mind, what, what I don't want to see happen, what I, and I'm just brainstorming here, but what I would like, what I hope wouldn't happen is that if somebody tried to come to the city and claimed that they had scratched the dirt or put, you know, we, hey, we did a tiny little bit of work and our intention was this was going to be some multi-family and I would hope that it would not meet this condition.
What if you changed the word used to occupied?
What, that might be a better word. I, I liked, I like what you said Vance about, I mean, utilities, because did it have a C of O, because the reason why I say that is if something wasn't developed and built, occupied and used up to the condition of the standard, then somebody else who might have a shell or a foundation, if it's a shell or a foundation and it wasn't finished and it wasn't occupied, they ought to go through a rezone.
Right.
If there are instances in town, you know, I can think of one specifically where, you know, on Johnson Avenue, it's like, that is a good example of one that was built, occupied, used, that likely fits the nature of this condition. But it would be nice if the condition, this conditional provision was made available for those properties that were in use, not partially constructed.
Right. And that's, from a staff standpoint, that's what I keep coming back to, but that's something the council's going to have to ultimately decide.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wouldn't mind equipping them with, with the best term possible. And all the reason I say is conditional uses, I mean, it really have to be discussed case by case and considered with the council and the council can kind of decide. I just think it'd be worth the intent of all of this to kind of convey to whatever degree possible, right? And it, right in line with what you said is, just so that we, in my opinion, narrowing it as close as we can to making it say it was put in use as utilities or occu, like to what, whatever degree, um, occupied, used, anything like that. Just so that a shell building to me does not, should not meet this, this condition.
No, we, I mean, we brought this up for pre-existing structures, not new.
I've gone through the town and multiple different times looking for properties and they're always trying to sell us on the fact that somebody had put in a foundation and there's a fair amount of properties in town that have a foundation and nothing else. And I would hope those don't become. there's a fair amount of properties in town that have a foundation and nothing else. And I would hope those don't become candidates for this conditional use provision. It, I don't, I, I don't see, I don't particularly have an issue with the ten percent number either. I think that's kind of one of those things where we're going to have to get some input after the department has had some time with these to see if that's a good number or not. I like that there's some flexibility because there is renovation that needs to happen. The other thing about what you said, Vance, about ADUs in that section C, subparagraph B E C, it seems like the, the sentence itself does allow for an ADU. It says additional residential buildings will not be permitted on the parcel. Oh, with the exception. So you have that written in.
Right, I added that in. And the reason why is I thought that if we're forcing, if we're keeping it to the single-family zone, the single-family zone permits an ADU, it's probably a fight we would lose to say you can't. Besides, I know a couple of these already have another.
I, I was actually going to say, I like the idea because to me, if somebody ended up owning it, and I mean hypothetically, you could have a manager occupant living in the ADU or something, and I, I, and I can imagine that some of these larger homes and parcels probably already have one. I just think it's a benefit, and I think it's a good addition. I hope that it's just communicated to the city council the nature of what a conditional use is so that we can use it where we need to, and hopefully the public doesn't misuse.
Well, and that's what we're trying to do is get enough clarity in the code that the, if the council is, once they adopt the code, it would have to meet these conditions in order to approve a conditional use. If they don't like it, they would have to go through the process of amending the code.
Right. The only other thing I just hope to emphasize from my opinion or perspective is that if they want to use these homes and apply for the conditional use, make it a multifamily, that they really do meet all of the conditions of multifamily. You know, you, you've specifically listed some of them in the development standards. And I think there are likely more in the, in the standards specifically listed for multifamily, right? So what I guess what I'm trying to say is, well, if they meet, if they, if they're trying to achieve this conditional use status to be a conditional use opportunity to establish multifamily, it should meet any other multifamily condition.
They would have to have the parking, other things. And that would all come in as part of the site plan.
I don't think there's anything in what you've written here that suggests otherwise.
More specific if you feel like we do.
Like, it's even, in my mind, it's almost the opposite. It's just like, instead of specifically listing certain development standards that it has to meet, just simply say that it has to meet all of the, all of the development standards for the multifamily zone. Because they are, just so that, so that if one, if a property under this condition becomes approved, they're met, they have to meet the exact same standard without any misunderstanding.
The same as addressing it back to the site plan has to be approved
Exactly.
per one fifty-two dot zero nine five?
Yes, and I, I just don't want, I don't want, and by this is going way too into the details, but it's, sometimes if we specifically list that it has to meet these development standards, this one and this one, like, if we list, say, three of them that we know of, like site plan, we might not be thinking about five, six, seven, eight, but if we just refer back to the same standard as multifamily, which includes site plan, which, all the other, I, I'm not saying that you haven't done that, I just want to make sure that what, whatever properties meet this condition.
We can probably insert a little more language on the, on there that says that references the multifamily development standards, just by reference.
That would, to me, that would just make it real clear.
Something like it's subject to development standards, including these other, including these additional things or whatever.
Well, I would just say, it has to meet the development standards of the multifamily zone.
Right, period.
Period.
And then if we amend those down the road, we don't have to remember to come over here and amend.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, the language that specifically concerns me and when I bring this up is upon review, the town may require these things. And it's like, well, if I read that, I'd say, well, it says maybe in the conditional use application, but it says absolutely you will do it in multifamily. And I just want to see that this application meets the exact same standards. If we may have to do it in condition, then we should see use the same language, I think, in multifamily. And I just think if we just tie it together, then we're saying, saying less, saying more by saying less.
Maybe we just take F out and just expand B a little bit on the site plan explanation.
I like that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Concerns? I, I would, I thank you, Vance. I think this is going to be a very helpful allowance on a case-by-case basis for the use of some of these properties. And if I understand right, that the conditional use, if, if, if it is approved by town council, you can't change the nature of the use and still keep the condition, meaning it has to continue in its life to meet up to the conditions of the approval. You know, like, like it can't be expanded and, you know. And I think that's very helpful compared to allowing multifamily rezones spotted throughout our valley. If there's any other questions, comments? I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we recommend approval of this text amendment subject to the corrections Vance described, specifically in relation to, you know, the paragraph one fifty-two, and it's probably dot, is it dot zero zero four five or is it dot zero four five?
Zero zero.
Zero zero. Recommend that we, recommend approval of this text amendment with just clarification on this subparagraph BF, as Vance described it. Is that sufficient for a motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner LaCordi. Another discussion. Commissioners make their vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Appears unanimous. Commissioners, move on to Agenda Item Nine. This is the preliminary plat for Reservoir Estates subdivision. And I believe that is, which one is, which one is that one?
One on the back.
They're, they're in reverse order again.
Okay.
Aaron apologizes for that.
No problem. This is the development on the west side of Carling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we've seen, okay, we've seen this before, not like this, though. Alright, Vance, I believe we haven't, you've all got it. Yeah, he's wrong.
It's, it's the Reservoir Estates subdivision, so it's further back. This, this is the preliminary plant, and I believe Mr. Thompson is here to speak to this one also. This was rezoned in twenty-twenty-two and by Mr. Shem Stubbs, and they began the, the preliminary plat process. As the Reservoir Acres was being developed, those people bought this first section of property so they could develop it, do the road and stuff in conjunction with what they were doing. And so now they're just here to get this preliminary plat considered.
Okay. Thomas, would you like to?
Basically just a straight rundown to that first intersection.
So, thank you, Vance. Yeah, like Vance said, then, this was originally rezoned as an R2 zoning. So it's already permitted for that type of use. We went and purchased this one point eight one acres from Shem Stubbs so that we could develop the west side of Carling Street along with the east side, which we're currently doing with Reservoir Acres. And so, what we're proposing is sixteen lots, and on these sixteen lots, we want to do duplexes. So, there would be a duplex unit that would be on two lots going down. So there'd be a total of eight buildings. So, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Alright, so I, I remember when we considered this rezon. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at, at the time of the rezon, the, the boundary of the rezon was described by essentially a map because the, the boundary of the parcel didn't match.
Right, it was a piece of it.
It was a piece of.
Now, carved out. And it actually went on around the reservoir a little bit. So there's still about this much more linear feet of road that does a swoop and then goes on a little bit more that was part of that original rezon that these guys are not doing anything with.
Okay, so the, the, so the boundary of the rezon, this is a small part, is a, is a, is a part of that boundary?
Yes. I personally haven't seen the boundary of the rezon.
Okay.
But I believe it's bigger than what this property is.
And that entire boundary was zoned R2 within, okay. So, so here's, here's my, here's the reason why I ask. Because um, one of my concerns is that we are considering plat subdivisions without storm drain infrastructure. So, somewhere in our code, somewhere in our development standards, it talks about being exempt from stormwater detention if the subdivision is under a certain acreage.
Two acres, yeah.
And I, and I'm concerned that we're going to keep receiving applications for subdivisions under two acres on purpose. Now, I'm, I'm not saying that's what's going on here because I think, I think your boundary and your ownership or proposed ownership, whatever it is, is probably different than who owns the rest of the acreage, but as a town, I, I get concerned that we're going to have people picking a little piece here and a little piece there when the collection of all the pieces is, is a master plan development that needs stormwater.
Well, and, and just for clarification, the rest of that parcel is part of a bigger PAD that is currently in development.
Okay, so-
Which will address those issues.
So what about the, the, so this planned area development, but that planned area event, when, that planned area development does not include the section of R2 that was rezoned?
They are incorporating that into their plan.
So then where's the storm drain infrastructure for this subdivision?
This subdivision will run out to Mojave, just like the Reservoir Acres does.
The reason why I say that is because Carling Street is the access to the north for, for, obviously for this subdivision and for the subdivision behind it, and the subdivision further to the south. Right, so there's a certain amount of property that drains-
But if you go look at that, this is pretty close to the break point where that turns from running north to running south and west by nature.
Yes, I wa, I want to make sure that the town knows what the plan is for storm drain here so that this doesn't become a precedence that we continue to set by developers coming in with subdivisions just barely under two acres so they can avoid stormwater. It is my only, is my only comment, and
I appreciate that.
And the legitimate response really could be that there's a great break and very little water and it's received by Mojave, and there's a plan for all of these things. I just don't know if there is because, and there likely it is, but there might be somebody on the other side of the, of the line who's going to say, well, they didn't have to do it, why should we? We don't list this as one of the exceptions from standard, even though it, under two acres, right? So technically, it fits the standard. But I hate to say this terrible word because I don't want to increase the cost of development to the point where it's unreasonable. We just don't need that to happen because it's already so expensive. We also just got to keep in mind that we have a storm drain problem in Carroll City. And as we continue to develop, this problem will, will increase. One of the ways to help offset this, if the storm, if the subdivision doesn't have storm drain facilities because it's under this standard, is implement some kind of impact fee for storm drains so we can go solve the problem somewhere else in the town. And that's a terrible word, impact fees. But I just want to make mention that we do not collect anything for little projects, little small projects like this. And it's really helpful to get curb gutter and sidewalk because that helps storm drain. That, that is very important. We can channel it in the streets, that gets to where it needs to go, that is a, that is a major improvement. And maybe that is a way to think of the storm drain mitigation for projects under two acres, and, and that might be perfectly sufficient. So I just wanted to bring it up in conversation in relation to this application. There was one comment about whether there's an HOA, HOA or CCNRs. I don't, I don't know that there's anything in the town code. I legitimately, like, I don't know whether or not the ordinances of the town require CCNRs or an HOA. But I wouldn't be surprised if it, if it does in an R2.
I don't know that it does. It, but if they are, then we have to have a copy of those. I don't remember that they're required in an R2.
And I'm not trying, I'm actually, I'm not trying to promote that you do have one. That, I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I, I would suggest to the applicant that, that you consider CCNRs, whether there's an HOA or not. When you have common ownership of a structure, it helps to have articles that the buyer builder builds with so that somebody buying that duplex perfectly understands from the beginning that this is the shared arrangement between them and the other occupant of that structure who maintains the roof, the common wall, in the event of noise, damage, fire. It helps the developer considerably to have those in place, even if there's no HOA.
That makes sense, and, and we can, we'll look at that further and maybe we'll draft some up. The reason we didn't do it originally, I guess, is because we didn't, there's not really any common uh, facilities on this particular project or things like that, so we didn't feel like there was a need for it. But what you're saying makes sense in the terms of the actual building itself and how that's managed.
CCNRs don't create an HOA.
Right.
But it, I certainly would be, certainly would be helpful. And then I guess my, my last question was about the, okay, there is no plan or strip, okay, so that, that's actually, that's actually, I think, the next application. Those were my questions, was about storm drainage, the area of the rezon, and the suggestion about CCNR. I'm excited to see this product in Carroll City, and I'm grateful that they're duplexes. I think a duplex is going to be a great product for our town.
I don't have any comments. I think specifically for this project, it would fall under the original Reservoir Acres agreement for storm drainage with the city, wouldn't it? Since it's involving one of the same, one of the streets.
It would have to be a specific action.
Okay.
If the city's up to it, or up for it, we would, you know, be happy to put it under that.
I was just wondering, since it involves a portion of the same street, it would just include the other half of that, that street originally in the agreement?
That's something that the developer would need to request.
And you and I, we've talked about this on different applications, CCNRs, articles, whatever it may be, generally not required at preliminary either. So it's not saying that that should be subject to scrutiny in the nature of the, in the application. Okay, Commissioners?
So, so originally, this was not part of Reservoir Acres?
Right, the boundary line for Reservoir Acres is at the center line of Carling. Yeah, right.
And why duplexes instead of just single units, townhomes?
We wanted to create a product that was in between what we're doing at the reservoir here, and we're building the townhouses down the street. We wanted to do a product that was in between there so that there's a variety of products that are available. And, and so we went with duplexes there. But, similar to a townhouse, though.
The same, the same applicant has a project under construction on Mojave, close to the highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, those, are they fourplexes? Yeah.
And Shim's got quite a bit planned to the south, as we all know.
Yeah, and that's where a master plan might come in, particularly with stormwater management, because. Once you do get over that high point on the street, which is pretty much immediately south of this project.
Runs to the wash.
Then where does, where does all that water go? You know, there there, at that point, there's not really existing street. Infrastructure to tie into, so. So yeah, that's definitely gonna become more of a issue.
This, as you go farther south. This isn't in the side of your, the boundary of your project, but the property, if you know, right, I don't wanna get this super because it's not, not within your application. But the property directly to the west. And maybe I should ask Vance, does it have access to Mojave? There's, there's a gap in, well, Zion Quality Real Estate that.
Yes, there's a, there's a parcel of land between. The land that Paul Black has and this development that does about Mojave happening.
It does, but I do you know in their master plan if there's another road that connects into Mojave?
Oh, right now they are looking at taking the right of way that was given to Paul and expanding that. As a road. And then these will tie together further up in and make their way around.
I believe that angled, that angled property line on the south. I believe they are planning for a road right there that would connect to Carling and it would go back into that area.
The property direct, and like I said, this is not connected to your application, I just, the topography in that area, the property directly to the west. Will need to flow, will drain to Mojave. And and so for some reason in my mind, I have this picture of the acreage to the west somehow having kind of a loop. Where it connected twice into Carling and not Mojave, and I might be wrong, I might be completely misunderstanding that, but. And it's probably inaccurate because if that were the case, there would be no outlets into Mojave for gravity sewer and storm.
Yeah, they'd have to put in something special to get it to Mojave, but. I personally haven't seen their road arrangement, I just know that they do plan for one right there coming.
I don't mean to overdo it, I just bring it up because of this, we have a collection here. Where the storm, the stormwater in this little area, including whatever future development happens with the black property. Like that all does go to that intersection of Mojave and and Central Street. Which blows out every time. It rains. Okay, anything else, commissioners? Appreciate the discussion and I appreciate the thoroughness of the app- application and the documents that are in our preliminary plat. If there's no other comments, entertain a motion from commissioners. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat for reservoir estates subdivision.
I'll second. I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Steed. Yeah, commissioners in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Appears unanimous. Agenda item number ten. This is the preliminary plat for Pioneer Village subdivision. It's in the middle of our packet, this is a. Smaller subdivision, is that correct Vance?
Yes, it looks like a four lot on roughly one acre, just a shy one acre.
And if you can, we've seen this before, right? So this is part of the reason why, isn't this the reason, one of the reasons why we did?
This, this is the impetus to adjust the width on the R one eight.
Okay, okay.
This very project.
And and. I don't know, I think we kinda understand this, right? One, one question I had though is, I I'm trying to understand, I might have confused myself, is this, is this gonna? Is this gonna be turned into four or is this gonna be turned into five?
Uh, four lots. Four lots total. We were thinking at one point to do a lot north of the existing house, but we scrapped that idea. We wanted to make that corner lot with the existing house bigger and more attractive for that size of a house, so.
So is that a subdivision anymore?
That's the reason to be my very next question.
Four lots turns it into a subdivision.
A lot split you can do up to three.
So.
Four, or if it creates a new street of any size.
Okay, so here are all the questions now because we jumped into a different category, right? Subdivision. The first one I have is I think I noticed in the packet that something about there's gonna be, there will be no, there's no asphalt, is that, is that right in the subdivision?
We aren't proposing asphalt right now, but. But we can include that if you wanna.
Well, here, here's the reason why, one of the reasons why I ask is because. On lot splits. Lot splits are done administratively.
Right.
What I am going to recommend versus asphalt, because there's no asphalt to tie to anywhere within a couple of blocks either direction.
Right.
Warren Avenue is chip sealed. And so I would propose that we do the the chip seal tie in on Warren and then the. The strip up to Pioneer Street.
As chip seal.
In lieu of asphalt.
A strip of chip seal? Up Pioneer, okay.
The re- the very specific reason, I I always wanna try to be careful, me, not to get caught in setting precedent. Unnecessarily. And I suppose. That the nature of our lot splits creates some flexibility because there's not a plating requirement and it can be done at staff level. It seems more flexible for good reason. Now, we don't have. Really a difference, a deviation from subdivision standard, whether it's four lots or four hundred lots, they're in our, in our, in our. Code, our town code. Or even our development standards. And I just want to, I just want to make sure that in consideration of this preliminary plat, like this isn't a rezone, this is not a lot split. Like this is a preliminary plat, which. Which even though it's so, it's very simple. Like a preliminary plat. Is a subdivision and a subdivision is held to the standard and we would hold that standard to any other subdivision. And I am. Really happy to see something happen that makes sense. That's more useful. Than sometimes meeting just the exact letter of the code. Just as long as the town is able to. To document on a preliminary plat.
Right, what what we would wanna do is is run the numbers. And then say, okay, in lieu of asphalt, tie this chip seal in and give us so many feet of chip seal up Pioneer.
Right, and then list that as. A variation from standard on the preliminary plat.
Might, might go a one row wider than center line or something.
Yeah, enough to get another vehicle on the other side of the road. Yeah. So it feels less like an island.
But and it also addresses the reason why, you know, and to me that seems.
And also, Thomas, we will be talking about a potential waterway across Pioneer right there.
Right, okay.
That'll be part of that discussion, because the second half of that waterway is outside of your boundary.
Yeah, well, on Warren Avenue, you can get some water.
Yes, to to me, that that is the kind of conversation I think that becomes really beneficial by. Not put installing improvements that essentially are ineffective versus something that could be more ineffective and trying to make it. Not a burden unnecessarily on.
We've done that in other places where we've, because we don't want a waterway that goes halfway across the street and stops.
I.
Yeah.
It would be real helpful to have those sorts of things sorted out. Right, and then included in the application for preliminary plat. So that that can go to the town council, and I think maybe there's an opportunity to do that still.
Between now and then, or?
If possible.
Yeah.
Just so that, just so that. I sit on the commission, I see these applications every month and I get thinking to myself, well, I could go do a subdivision somewhere else and I could use the same. Here, I I'm familiar with all these exceptions from standard, but like I don't want me or anybody else to feel like we're not. You know, that we're creating opportunities unnecessarily for developers, but working to get, you know, better outcomes. Using me as a bad example, but. You know, I think what you suggested, I'm a big fan of putting variations from from standard on preliminary plat. I am just such a big fan because it's just.
Well, it's just understood.
Right there.
Yeah, makes so it's understood.
Anybody that comes back, whoever, whoever, anybody ever comes back and looks at that preliminary plat. Approval, be like, yeah, if you wanted something like that, present it to the town council with the preliminary plat and let town council decide. But at least it's noted, discussed. Brought up, you know. Just. And the planter strip. I noticed something about it being improved to a certain degree and I.
I, I don't. I'm kinda getting ahead of our council a little bit.
Yes.
But I'm gonna recommend you move that sidewalk to the back of curb. Because there's a good chance we're going to narrow some of these right of ways up. Somewhere down the road in talking with Mayor Ream.
Okay, yeah, we can move it right to the back side of the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, if you, I'm a fan of that, it, well. Some streets, it makes a lot of sense.
Right, well, I'm talking about these ones back in the neighborhood.
Especially when they're not the major or minor collectors, when they're, when they're intersector streets, but. But if you're gonna, if this. Do we need to vacate a part of, oh, maybe down the road potentially?
That we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit because we haven't had that discussion with the council, we've just had it at staff level and with mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Have a very extensive discussion on that as we do the general plan update.
Makes sense.
There are several streets that are that way.
And so what we want to do is develop them and put the, and there's no reason to have the planter strip back in the residential neighborhoods.
Right.
Let the residences do their.
Maintenance and improvements, yeah.
And so I would recommend we move those sidewalks up to the curb. So that if the council comes to that, we're not having to move a sidewalk to get it, keep it in our ride.
Yeah, I like, I like that and I like what you said about it being. Important on some streets, not all streets, because I think the side streets. Makes a lot of sense. And the other thing is, you know, the conversation about driveways, you know, if you're gonna go pour curb gutter and sidewalk up against. Curb and gutter and sidewalk, you know, pour them all together.
Yeah.
I think you know what I'm talking about. Yeah, and then also pouring the driveways in when you pour the, yeah, right. And then whatever that looks like. I'm excited to see this becoming a reality. I think this is gonna be a great template for a lot of lots.
Yeah.
And commissioners, any? Questions?
I don't think so.
There's no other questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the, of not wildflowers, excuse me. Of the preliminary plat for Pioneer Village subdivision.
I'll second it. Uh, motion and a second, I I might just quickly comment on the motion or the second that.
We need to add there the improvement.
That's what I was gonna ask, do you, do you feel any need?
If you'd make your motion to include the variance as discussed.
Okay, so starting over, I will make a motion to recommend the approval for the preliminary plat. Of Pioneer Village subdivision with the discussion on other improvements made in lieu of asphalt.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Cordy, LaCordy, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not, if commissioners in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Appears unanimous. Thank you again, Thomas and Isaiah. I really wanna go to this planning conference, but I, there's just no way.
Also for clarification. The second, I should have looked this up ahead of time. Is not gonna work. We need to move that to the ninth. Because of the way the month lays out, that works, because the council meeting will be.
Right. Okay, our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, September ninth at five P M. Anything else, Vance for?
Nope, just the, there's three of us registered for the planning conference.
Good.
Delph and Commissioner LaCordy and Commissioner Pavel.
I appreciate commissioners attending, I'm looking forward to hearing from you when you come back, you can share some of that information because the last one I went to was. Very, very helpful, so grateful you're willing to to take the trip and Vance as well. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn, we'll call the meeting closed at six oh six P M. Thank you Vance and the applicants and owners and applicants and commissioners for being here. Appreciate the work we did, thank you.